Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, November 20, Wednesday, November 4th, 2020. Can we have a roll call, please?
Bow.
Hi.
Garrity.
Here.
Nordentoff.
Here.
Path.
Here.
Pasak.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Sula.
Present. Everyone is here this evening. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, and in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order in response to COVID-19, some members of the Commission, and I believe the petitioners, will be participating remotely as allowed by said decree. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the meeting that was held on October 7th. Does anybody have any questions, comments? If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Was it you on that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Motion by Mr. Path, second by Mr. Bow. Roll call, please.
Bow.
Hi.
Garrity.
Hi.
Nordentoff.
Hi.
Path.
Hi.
Pasak.
Hi.
Riley.
Aye.
Sula.
Aye, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the proposed meeting scheduled for calendar year 2021. It looked pretty straightforward to me. The only thing we're missing is a second meeting in September, because that would have fallen on Yam Khor.
Correct.
Does anybody have any, any questions or concerns about the proposed schedule? If not, a motion to approve or adopt it would be in order.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Bow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Path. Roll call, please.
Bow.
Hi.
Garrity.
Hi.
Nordentoff.
Hi.
Path.
Hi.
Pasak.
Hi.
Riley.
Aye.
Sula.
Aye, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for special use permits requested by Raising Cane's, proposed to be located at 6415 Grand Avenue. Clara, do you have staff report?
Yep. Dustin Johnson, on behalf of Raising Cane's, is seeking special use permits to allow the following: One, a drive-through facility without a required bailout lane; Two, an increase in the allowed height of a dumpster enclosure from eight feet to approximately 15.7 feet; Three, a reduction in the transparency on the north elevation to less than the required 50 percent; and Four, exterior insulation and finish system, or IFIS, below the four-foot building line. In regards to these requests, the Planning and Zoning Board will make a recommendation that will be forwarded to the Village Board for their determination. The applicant is also seeking a parking modification to allow the number of required parking spaces to be reduced from 51 to 41, on which the Planning and Zoning Board has decision-making authority. The applicant is in attendance remotely via Zoom tonight.
Okay, thanks Clara. As this is a public hearing, I would request that the Village Attorney swear in, the petitioners.
Thank you, Jim. All that will be testifying, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, at this time, I'll turn the floor over to the petitioner, just to help us keep people straight. If you could just please identify yourselves as you talk, and maybe just state what your role, what the organization is.
Sure, I'll start. My name is Melanie Bagley. I am acting as the Property Development Manager for Raising Cane's. In short, I'm just a team player among my other team players here, just helping to kind of keep the process moving along and helping us to get it to construction. With me is Dusty Johnson, who is our, with ADA Architecture, and Tom Sisafransky with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, and he is our civil engineer. So I'm going to try and be organized in my efforts here. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the Raising Cane's Chicken Fingers concept, but we have, Dusty and Tom and myself met with your wonderful staff probably, gosh, close to a year ago, and then unbeknownst to all of us, we, well, let me just say, we had a great meeting, and then unbeknownst to all of us, we were faced with the 2020 COVID hurdles, and so we kind of put this project on hold. But all the while, kind of in the background, still, you know, kind of touching base on this project, one of the things that we had to pursue was a relief from the subdivision requirements for a 50-foot landscape setback, which required that we pursue approval from not only our property owner, but the subdivision property owners as well, including Menards, which actually has taken us since February until just recently, where we had to negotiate that with all those property owners. So we were diligently, diligently pursuing that in the background, all the while dealing with the issues of COVID and waiting to be released to go again to pursue these, this SUP. Raising Cane's, for those of you that aren't familiar, is a chicken finger concept. We specialize in fresh chicken fingers only. We have deliveries every day of fresh chicken fingers, every day, delivery of fresh chicken. Chicken is fried from the moment you pull in the parking lot. Staff is trained to, to watch for a mom of, you know, with a suburban full of kids, to, you know, someone alone in their car, to anticipate their needs and their order. And as such, we have been able to create a functioning operation that has, is so fine-tuned, and I'll kind of touch on that here in a minute when we talk about the dual-lane drive-through. But just briefly, we, we are a concept, a cool, we have a cool culture. We take pride in the appearance of our, of our site and our building. Our managers, every day at every shift change, have a checklist where they walk the site from curb to curb, and they, they, you know, make sure there's no trash. They make sure the trash enclosure gate is closed, you know, just keeping the site clean and making sure the landscape isn't, landscaping isn't dying, et cetera. So to touch on the points that Clara mentioned, we are seeking relief from four different items today. And then, while it's not an S, you know, an SUP request, we are also seeking relief from your, from the parking standards, the minimum parking standard requirement. So I'm going to start with the drive-through. So Clara, are you, does everybody have our site plan? Or hopefully, you've all seen it at some point. We are proposing a dual-lane drive-through setup. Part of this is in response to what's been going on, but, but really, Raising Cane sees 70% to 75% of our business from drive-through service. And there have been, been issues with stacking at other sites where there's only a single-lane drive-through. So what we have proposed here is a, is a dual-lane drive-through setup. It has two menu boards. It will also be equipped with staff that will be trained to use iPads to facilitate orders. I can tell you right now that pre-dual drive-through, drive-through lane, from the time a patron makes their order at the menu boards, the time their food is delivered or provided to them at the pickup window, we're looking at less than two and a half minutes. That is, if you sit in your Starbucks line, your Chick-fil-A line, or whatever, that's less than, that's industry, that's an industry high. With the implementation of this dual-lane drive-through, we're looking at almost two minutes and 10 seconds, or two minutes and 17 seconds. I mean, we, we have cameras in our corporate office that watch every store, and we watch how quickly they get through the drive-through. Now, we're seeking relief from the village's standard to, to provide that, that true bypass lane. And what I want to, to, the case I want to make to, to you all tonight is that in peak hours, with, you know, our peak lunch and peak dinner hours, it is likely that both lanes would be fully operational, would be, would have cars in the queue. In off-peak hours, it is, it is likely that only one of those lanes will be fully operational, at which point, the outside lane could act as a bailout lane or a bypass lane. You know, when we learned that, that Raising Cane's was going to implement this dual-lane drive-through, Tom, our civil engineer, did reach out, I believe, to Mr. Hightower to discuss, you know, whether or not this would be acceptable to the village. And, you know, it was, you know, I know that you have other concepts in your village. I know Portillo's also has a dual-lane drive-through. They don't have two menu boards, but they do have staff out there in the, in the drive-through lanes facilitating orders with iPads. So I would ask that, that you all consider the, the possibility that this can serve as a bailout lane, that's, that in peak times, when there are cars in the queue, we do have staff in the, in the drive-through lanes that should, God forbid, there be some issue where somebody needs to escape, you know, there would be staff there to help, and employees to help facilitate that exit. I mean, most of the time, I would like to believe that people are exiting because they forgot their credit card or their money or whatever, in which case, you know, they would be out of there in probably two and a half minutes at max. So that's item one. The, the second item is regarding the dumpster enclosure. Again, I told you about how Raising Cane's takes pride in, in the appearance of their building. The dumpster enclosure is a part of that as well. We, at the onset of every project, we are required to provide our site plan to our procurement team, which includes our, our waste hauler, the people that we have a national contract with, and they are required to vet the site plans and look at the trash, you know, the route that the trash truck is going to take. And they, we know the radius that's required, the clearances that are required to, to access that trash enclosure. And what we've seen along the way is that, you know, based on a front loader service, without raising the roof of that trash enclosure, it just gets knocked, it gets ruined, it gets ripped, and then it rusts, and then it looks horrible. So the raising of this roof is to help mitigate that issue. The roof over the trash enclosure itself does provide for relief from any snow that could get in there. I mean, we all know what these trash enclosures can look like, right? I mean, they can get water in there, they, they get gross, and, and the roof helps to mitigate that. So that, we're seeking relief from as well. The third thing is the reduction transparency. As you can see, if you, if you look at our site plan, our drive-through window is facing Grand Avenue, our drive-through side elevation, rather. I know that's not normally ideal, but as it stands with our prototypical design, we have 33% opacity on that drive-through side. The requirement is 50%, so we're 17% shy. Incorporating additional windows would mean incorporating windows in, you know, areas of, you know, the kitchen area essentially, the food prep area. I know there are concepts that have incorporated that unique feature where you can see into the kitchen, everything, but in this case, we would prefer that, you know, we're proposing a mural that has the village name on it on that side. Raising Cane's, I don't know if you all are familiar with the, the site as it exists today, but the Boston Market storefront faces Grand Avenue. They have landscaping to the, the west, and nothing in that landscape area along Grand Avenue. But we are proposing, Raising Cane spends 150 grand on, on their landscape package alone. So, so we are asking for relief from that, that requirement to have that opacity. We're also proposing to provide a very lush landscape package along that, that corridor there, just to, to break up the visual of the plane of that building with land. So where we lack in opacity, we've got this very attractive landscaping, and it also helps to, to screen cars in the queue. The last thing, and I apologize if I'm being long-winded, excuse me, second to last thing, is the, the request to have IFIS at the base of our building. I, I understand the reasoning for not wanting to have the IFIS. Again, we talk about weather, we talk about snow, we talk about rain. It splashes up, that, that IFIS can rot, or drive it can, can rot, and it looks terrible. But I, as I mentioned to you early on in this presentation, that doesn't happen. I have worked with other clients, raise, again, Raising Cane's walks that site. If there is something that is, a system that is failing, if there is a tree that is dying, if there is a, you know, a brick without mortar, I mean, it is going to be facilities, operation, they're, they're getting calls from the field, it gets fixed. And I can, I can guarantee that rotting drive it is, is not going to be an issue at this store. And lastly, is our, is the request to reduce the overall parking. When we met with staff, you know, it was, it was indicated to us that these development standards were fairly new to the village, or had recently been implemented. And so, based on the size of our building, we were looking at needing to provide over 50 parks. What we did, what we provided to staff was a list of other sites that were, that were permitted in surrounding jurisdictions, villages, et cetera, where we have about an average of 30 parks and a restaurant that functions just fine. We do not have cross-parking with Menards, that is a fact. But I'm, with 70% to 75% of our business being drive-through, 41 parks is more than adequate to serve our customers. Again, Tom, I had asked Tom to pull projects where we had less than 40 parks with a, with a functioning site and a functioning restaurant, the most of those being at North Riverside. North Riverside has 41 parks, with the, in the least, being in Harwood Heights. Harwood Heights only has 15 parks, and again, functions just fine. And mind you, also has a single-lane drive-through. So that is it. I'm here for any questions I can help answer. Tom is here to answer any technical questions regarding site design. Dusty is here to answer any technical questions regarding the building architecture. So thank you so much for indulging me, and look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Melanie. I guess I'll start with Mr. Nordentoff. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, generally, I'm, I'm pretty satisfied with most of the requests. I guess my, I was wondering whether there was any additional renderings or photographs available of other sites you've done with trash enclosures of this scale. I went through the packet a couple of times, and I didn't see anything in, in rendering, as I saw, you know, some architectural drawings of the, of the, of the plan for that, but was wondering, it just, you know, I'm getting, I'm getting a hard time trying to just visualize something that's nearly 16 feet tall, enclosed, you know, almost all the way around on three sides at least. Given its location, you know, relative to parking, it's not really attached to the building, screened, or anything like that. It's kind of freestanding, obviously, by itself, and I was wondering if there was anything else that could be right to give me a, a better visual of that trash enclosure.
So the implementation of this particular design is, is very new. In fact, the, the sites that I sent, that you're seeing in the packet that I sent to Clara, those are all now just being permitted. So I don't have a rendering for you. What I, you know, what I can, you know, I'm, I'm looking at our landscape plan. You know, we are, we are proposing to screen it with landscaping fully on, on the east side. You know, the, the north side will be a little bit more exposed to people in the drive-through, which is, you know, never ideal. But again, you know, we're building it out of, you know, masonry materials. We can add more landscaping there if that would, would appease the community. You know, I, if, if, if it's truly something that you're, that you may have heartburn over, you know, we can, we can make it a condition. I don't know, Clara, if that's something that once we do have, I like to say, some glamour shots of a, of a newly constructed enclosure, we can send those to, to, around to everybody for consideration as a condition of our permit. And that's something I'm willing to, to do. But unfortunately, I don't have any, I don't have any beauty shots at this time.
Great. Thank you very much. That's all I had at the moment.
Sure.
I'm just going to ask kind of a follow-up question to what Dave just asked. How, how tall will the proposed enclosures be compared to how tall the building is? Because that, that might help put it in perspective for us.
Right, so, so, sorry, my, my, my eyes are failing me. The building is about 19 feet, almost, almost 20 feet in height approximately. You know, the, to the, Dusty, help me out here, the, to the bottom of the, the enclosure, oh, here, that's my detail, forgive me.
We're at, we're at 14 feet to the bottom of the closure in order to allow the trucks to operate functionally. The overall height is about 15 and a half feet because of the, just the roof construction that we, we put on there. And Melanie nailed it, we are, we are about 19 feet 10, so about 20 feet for the building. And if it, if it does help, I agree with Melanie completely, we can provide an exhibit or a condition, but if it helps visualize, we, we did decide to comply and wrap the dumpster, the enclosure with the brick that matches the building. And then above that masonry is, will be a finish, I'm going to say black. If you notice on our elevations, you'll see some canopies that have a, a steel metal, like an industrial-type look. It's, it's tended to, it's intended to match that feel, so it, it very much meshes with the building itself.
Almost like you wouldn't know it was a trash enclosure. No, all kidding aside, I mean, we are using, you know, higher-quality materials here. This is not your average split-face CMU trash enclosure with a chain link, you know, gate.
All right, Josh?
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I, I, I was rereading the request number four about IFIS, and I just wanted some clarification on, on this. And this, so this, this sounds like it's just a higher level of quality of, of that, that bottom four feet of the building. And I was just looking, is there a rendering in the package? Take a look at what that looks like? Is that, is that the colored pictures that are included in the package?
Those, those color 2D elevations show that bottom band of masonry that we're proposing. And a little, little extra clarity on that, the, the regulation requirement is four feet. We're, we're actually, we have it up to about three foot two, so we're only asking for a little of relief of about 10 inches in order to keep the, the current, you know, aesthetic vocabulary of the building that we put together. We will still, we, you know, the, the brick at the base will, will be, will comply with the regulations and will hold up just fine. And the drive it we utilize is a higher-end product. Basically, it's, it's meant to, it has a, it has a longer warranty, and it's more durable during all the extreme winters. So that's, that's where we, that's where we're requesting that little bit of relief on that item.
So the exception that you're asking for is the top 10 inches of the four-foot that we require?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Did it, did it help, Josh?
It sure does. No, it sure does. That was my only point of clarification. I'll, I'll, I'll add my, my sort of commentary during the discussion section of our meeting.
Okay, Laura?
Um, yeah, item number four. It just, as a realtor, we, when we show homes, we try to, I hate to say steer, but shy people away from homes that do have drive it on it, simply because they just don't tend to hold up well in this weather. And the, the staining and the cracking, you know, kind of make it an undesirable exterior. And I'm just curious as to why, I guess, all your, do all your locations have this, or is it just this one?
No, this is, this is our, our standard. And, and Laura, I do understand where you're coming from, but I, I want to, I want to ensure you that we have an owner of this company, the owner of this company takes so much pride in these stores. Todd Graves comes out and, and checks on these stores. He, he checks to make sure people are watering the plants, that the vegetation is, is thriving. And I, a homeowner, I think, is in a different situation where, you know, whether or not they're in a homeowners association or not, you know, they may tend to let those things go, whether it's for monetary reasons, or time, or whatever. But, you know, our, our, our managers are trained to, to notify the corporate office if there's any failing systems, whether, you know, related to any of the materials. You know, when you start to see more Raising Cane's stores pop up in the area, I would encourage you to, to drive by and, and, you know, see how well they're taken care of. I, I just, I can't assure you enough that, that maintenance of this particular material will not be an issue.
Thank you.
Tim?
No questions at this time.
Okay, Edwin?
No, I don't really have any questions. I think it's a nice-looking building.
Brian?
Thank you.
I have no questions. I think that's great.
Okay. Just a couple of comments from my perspective, just going through them one by one here. The, the request to have a drive-through without a bailout, given the fact that it's manned, I, I think that I don't have very much issue with, you know, with, with the request there. The height of the dumpster, I think, is a judgmental thing, and I'm not totally sure where I'm at on that one yet. But given that it is going to be shorter than the building, I'm not so troubled by that, I guess. The reduction in transparency, when I think about the, the spirit of why we have that particular provision, I think it's to avoid monotony. And I, I think the, the renderings here show that, you know, that particular wall is anything but monotonous. So I, I'm okay with that. And the, the 10-inch variation on the building line, I think that's pretty minor, in my opinion. For the formality, unless somebody's joined on Zoom, there's nobody from the public, correct?
Correct.
And there's no one here in the chambers as well, so I'm opening and closing the floor to the, to the public. So let's go back to discussion. Dave, any, any additional comments?
No, the only other thing that I was wondering if we were going to have any further discussion on was the reduction in the parking, if that's included in this, or are we just dealing with the special use requests at this time?
Right now, we're just dealing with the public hearing things, which are just the special use things. After we finish that, we'll go to the public meeting part, and that's where the, the parking thing comes into play.
No problem. Then I have no further questions. Thank you.
Josh?
No, just, just very supportive of, of this entire concept. I grew up in Louisiana.
Oh, great.
I love Raising Cane's, went to LSU near some of the original locations. Love it. It's grown as a brand and a concept, and I'm very supportive. Regarding each request for this commission, for this board, I think, look, Chick-fil-A has, has the same, you know, sort of system with the two lanes, and they don't have a bailout lane. So no problems with the request number one. I think request number two really beautifies in a way and kind of keeps it very nice-looking and clean. Request number three, it, it's a very small, you know, 17% of beautifies, and it's an effort to improve. And the same thing with number four. So, so very supportive.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Josh. Laura?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Tim?
Ted, that is a great-looking project. I concur that you don't have a problem with the bailout lane. I think the height of the dumpster adds value rather than subtracts value. Taking a look at the pictures, everything supplied in the documents that were sent over, I think it looks like a wonderful project.
Thank you.
Edwin?
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about that dumpster. None of your other restaurants have that? I was looking at some online, and I-
We, we do. A lot of our other locations have a covered dumpster enclosure, particularly up here in the, in our, what we call our north region. It's slightly higher to, to allow, you know, functionality to it. But yeah, a lot of our other locations have the rear structure built a bit higher, and it's, like Melanie stated earlier, it's to keep, it's to keep it cleaner, keep a little weather out. It's to help our employees when they're dealing with day-to-day operations.
I, I understand why you're doing it. It just, see, I would love to see it, because it seems to me like it's going to be a tower standing out there. It's pretty tall. What's the footprint on that? What's the dimensions on it? I don't see it on here.
It's a, it's a 20-foot wide by 14-foot 8.
Oh, that's pretty big.
Yeah, we, yeah, we'll house, we'll house two- Yeah, we, yeah, we'll house, we'll house two dumpsters in there.
Yeah, I can, I can see that on there too.
So that's roughly the size of a two-car garage.
Yeah, it's big. Well, maybe it won't look so much like a tower then, if it's that big, I don't know. It stands away from the building quite a bit, which seems odd, but.
Again, you know, if it's, if it's something that, you know, we are, we are in for, we have submitted our plans for building permit at our risk, you know, so those have been submitted for review. As I mentioned, there are other locations in the area that have the same structure already in for permit, and it may be that, you know, we can, we can get you some photographs or something, or even a better rendering, you know, to be circulated. Should you, you know, should, should you all feel strongly enough that it needs to be conditioned or whatever, that's, you know, I understand.
Yeah, it would have been nice if it was in the artist's rendering, would it give us an idea of what it was going to look like out there? Anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you.
I have no issues, I think this is great.
Yeah, okay, and I don't have any additional comments to what I said before, so is anyone willing to advance a motion?
I can do it.
Was that Josh?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Motion to forward a favorable recommendation on the petition of Dustin Johnston on behalf of Raising Canes for the following special use permits. Number one, SUP to allow a restaurant with a double drive-through lanes without an escape lane. Number two, SUP to allow an increase in the allowed height of a dumpster enclosure from an eight-foot to approximately 17 feet. Number three, SUP to allow a reduction in the transparency on the north elevation to less than the required 50%. And number four, SUP to allow exterior insulation and finish system starting at a height of three foot two inches on the building's facade.
And you do want to note-
I'll second.
You do want to note that for three and four, insubstantial conformance with the plans submitted.
So for, just to make a change to my motion for number three and four, for the, you know, insubstantial conformance with the plan submitted.
Okay.
Second.
I'm sorry, I couldn't tell whose voice that was.
Tim.
Tim, okay. Any discussion on the motion? If not, can we have roll call, please?
Bow.
Aye.
Garrity.
Aye.
Norten Topf.
Aye.
Path.
Aye.
Paysek.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Sula.
Aye, motion carries. As you may or may not know, we are a recommending body to the Village Board, and the Village Board makes the ultimate decision in terms of what happens with these items, but good luck with your project, it looks, it looks really nice. Okay, then we have an additional item to deal with the parking modification request. Clara, can you give us just a framework on that?
So for the parking modification, they are requesting a reduction code requires a restaurant of this size to have 51 parking spaces, and they're requesting 41. And this was reviewed by our parking consultant as well, our traffic consultant, Bill Greve. The report is in your packet there. And then Raising Canes did provide other locations in the area along with the parking spaces that they have for comparison. And then, as we noted today, we sent you a, just kind of graphic showing what they're proposing, or what they're proposing for the middle lane. I think Tracy has, she can pull it up there. Right, as of right now, in the middle lane, they're actually proposing, as you can see on their site plan they presented, pull-through spots that are just one bay each, as opposed to having the double set of parking spaces there in the middle. And this is something that Bill Greve, our traffic consultant, came up with as an alternative to that, so that's something that we discussed with Raising Canes and they wanted to get your feedback on as to which you thought might be a better site plan.
Thank you. Melanie or Dustin?
Sure, so we reviewed all of the conditions in the traffic planning review, with number 10 being, you know, really the only one that we just wanted to really just speak to, and as Clara mentioned, just get your input on. If you, Clara, are you able to pull the original site plan up again?
We have that in the packet.
So, forgive me. So, so the benefits of the site plan as it's designed are that that southernmost drive aisle is aligned with the entrance to the drive-through. Now, as we discussed before, the double lane drive-through does provide for a significant number of cars to stack, but the alignment of this drive with the entrance to that drive-through does, in a way, create some additional room for stacks should it need to occur. I understand, also, I do understand the, the traffic consultant's theory that people parking in that central bay of parks, there may be confusion with direction of parking, you know, people parking, you know, facing north, people parking facing south, issues with opening car doors and hitting, you know, rear view, excuse me, driver-side mirrors. But I, you know, I would argue that that might be a situation regardless of whether or not there's a single or double bay apart, simply because if someone were parking facing south and there was an empty stall in front of them, who's to say they're not going to pull forward, you know, and go out, go out to the south? Or come in and park and face the other way? I think, I don't know that it necess, basically, I don't know that it necessarily creates a systematic method of parking. The other thing that we're concerned about is if we, if we do create two bays of parking in the center of the space, that there's potential for somebody that is traveling west to go out of our site at that westernmost access point in the southbound lane. They may, the back of their car may block traffic when they're waiting to, you know, make a right and go out of there, or make a left and go out onto Gurney Mill Circle. So we are concerned that the, the recommended layout will create some additional confusion in and of itself. I don't know that there's necessarily that, an ideal situation here, but, but again, our biggest point in maintaining the site plan that we have is that the alignment of the drive-through to that drive aisle, preventing any traffic jams at that westernmost curb cut, and, and really, those are our two biggest points. Tom, did I forget anything there? Tom's on mute.
We lose Tom?
How about now?
There, there you go.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, those are the main points, I guess. I guess the one other thing that we had looked at was by kind of shuffling this parking around and bringing that south row of parking up to be aligned with that middle row. It's also creating a couple additional, I guess, compact parking stalls where they're just a little bit narrower than the rest of the parking stalls. Granted, it does provide one additional parking stall, but I guess our, our original plan just had three compact parking stalls where this would propose six.
Okay, Brian?
I like their original plan personally.
Edwin?
I'd say the same. I, I was surprised there was so much debate over pulling through parking spaces. People, some people hate it, some people love it. AAA recommends pulling through parking spaces whenever possible because most accidents are, happen backing up. So I think the first design was fine.
Tim?
I don't have a, I mean, to me, I'm just taking a look at the request, doing some number crunching here, and it looks to me that with the proposed building, with the 41 spaces that are requested, they would be compared to the other suburban locations, they'd be the most parking spaces in all, but, well, so North Riverside also would have 41. They know their business, I have no issue with it, so with the first request, and I would support that.
Laura?
Um, no, I'm fine, I, yeah, I as well feel better about the first rendering, and I'm fine with that.
Okay, Josh?
I'm supportive of the petitioner's request as well. No problem on my end.
Dave?
Yeah, my position on that is the same as well. I don't have any problem with what was submitted.
Okay, and from my perspective, I kind of like the first one too, the, in the original in the packet, so I believe then the only matter before us would be a motion to approve the reduction in parking requirement, correct? And we have approval ability at our level, that does, it's not a recommendation of the board, it's a, it's a minor exception, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, parking modification.
All right, any additional discussion? If not, is someone willing to advance a motion?
Go ahead, Jim.
Is that Tim?
It is.
Okay, go ahead, Tim.
Motion to approve a parking modification to allow the number of required parking spaces to be reduced from 51 to 41, in substantial conformance with the plan submitted.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Path. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Bow.
Aye.
Garrity.
Aye.
Norten Topf.
Aye.
Path.
Aye.
Paysek.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Sula.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you all very much from Raising Canes, I appreciate it.
Thank you all, have a great night, thank you so much.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To the Village.
Next item on the agenda, we have on the calendar, a possible meeting on the 16th of November, is, are we going to have one?
We do not have any public hearing items, but we might have a subdivision possibly, not sure.
So stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
Public comment, there's no one here, but I would just like to recognize that we received a planning update with our packet to tell us, you know, what's happened in the last few months versus, you know, vis-à-vis what we've discussed and what the Village Board has done, and I always appreciate those updates. Okay, next would be adjournment, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Moved by Mr. Bow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Path, roll call, please.
Bow.
Aye.
Garrity.
Aye.
Norten Topf.
Aye.
Path.
Aye.
Paysek.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Sula.
Aye, motion carries. Enjoy the nice, unseasonably warm weather, everyone. Okay, thank you. Good night, everyone.